Thank you for joining us this morning for the April first, twenty twenty-three, Montes Reno Special City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist the council members, staff, and members of the public. For the public to successfully participate in this meeting. During this morning's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the special city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise can. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise can to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise can option to comment. Participants calling in or on the telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide any back-up or comment. And lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all those missing things must be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I would like to call the, I would like to, I am calling the special meeting of the City Council, Monte Serena, to order on Saturday, April first at nine forty A M. With that, I'll make a few introductory comments. This is a full Brown Act meeting and however, it is a study session and we will make no decisions at this meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to go through our initiatives and budget priorities for fiscal twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And what we'd like to do is, is understand what the budgetary priorities are. So that staff can move forward and establish the budget. And in, in doing so, we will then make decisions on what is in the budget. So this is an input to the budget setting process. I will also say, well, you know what, let's, let's go through roll call.
Do you allow our council members actually?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Let's go ahead with that.
Yes, good morning, Councilmember Turner. Can you state your reason for virtual participation?
Ah, yes. Thank you for giving me the floor. I had physical therapy yesterday on my hip injury and it seems to have aggravated the problem. So I can neither stand nor sit for long periods of time. And at times I may have to lie down, so I couldn't, I couldn't come today. I need to keep changing positions. Therefore, I'm requesting that the council approve this meeting remotely based on the emergency circumstances, exception of A B two four four nine.
Would you like me to take a vote?
Yes, please. You can go around the room.
Okay, Mayor Mekachuk.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lahey.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
And Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Both will carry. Uh, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Lahey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer.
Present.
And Mayor Mekachuk.
Present.
Thank you.
So getting back to what I was saying earlier, uh, this is a study session. And we'll make no decisions, uh, in. I wish that it was one hundred percent in person because I think discussions like this are more are more, add more value when we're all in person. So I'm disappointed that Councilmember Turner is not here, but I understand the reason why she's not here. Um, I welcome staff that are here. Thank you for coming on your Saturday and for them to appear remotely is, is fine. Um, I, you know, it is Saturday morning. Um, we also have a gentleman here in the audience, uh, that is from San Jose State, San Jose State. So we're under the microscope here. And, and I welcome you. Uh, so with that, I would like to start with oral communications where any member of the public can state any matter relevant to the city of Monte Serena that is not on the agenda. If you would like to say something, please come forward to the podium if you're here in person. And if you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand.
I know.
No hands raised, no ones at the podium. If that's the case, I will close oral communications. Do we have written communications?
It is an email and it's been posted and everybody got a copy of the emails.
That's the one from Ms. Seidler?
Yeah, Ms. Seidler.
Perfect. Thank you. With that, uh, we'll go to new business and I believe that, uh, we've got a staff report and or a lead facilitator being city manager, Leon Aris. Also, at any point in time during the meeting, if someone needs to have a bite to eat, there is a table full of items. So please help yourself and we will not think that you're ignoring, we're being ignored if you go to get something, including coffee. Mr. Leon Aris, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the city clerk will be for a brief slide presentation. And some of this is aimed at a little bit of a refresher. We have two new council members, although they were on the council before, so they may remember aspects of it. But I wanted to include it just as kind of a segue from what we did in our past goal-setting session last year. And by the way, I would be remiss to mention that it's April Fool's Day, so happy April Fool's Day.
One more second, it's okay.
You know, on, on, on that notice, we're getting set up. Um, I looked at what other city councils have done. For example, I looked at, at the town of Los Gatos. And they have their session, goal-setting session in January. I believe it was January the twenty-fifth, and I also looked at Los Altos Hills. And they have a very detailed, uh, plan that they go through. It's, it's kind of evolved over the past year. But it's, it's very detailed, very robust, and it sets the, the path for them to go forward in a year. They do a mid-year update. Granted, we're a third the size, uh, less than half the size of Los Altos Hills. We don't have the resources. But I think it's something that the mayor may wish to consider next year, whoever the mayor shall be. And I think that it's appropriate to have this earlier in the year. So I would, we'll get to it a little later, but I would put forth that next year, we focus a little bit on process and having it earlier in the year. Um, that said, I think we're ready for the goal setting. Go ahead.
All right, the first slide, let's go to the next slide. Getting started, it says, call to order. And the public comments already been made by us. Let's move on to the next slide. Purpose of the meeting today is to identify the key accomplishments from the past year, review the city council role, mission, vision, and values, and review the previous city council strategical from twenty-two, twenty-three, and consider new objectives for twenty-three and twenty-four budget year. Some of the key accomplishments, next slide, please. From twenty-two, twenty-three, we adopted the new reach codes before the end of our fiscal, before the calendar year. We studied the user and regulatory fees and we updated some of those. There's still potentially more work to be done in that area. We have, we updated our objective standards. We updated our board and commission attendance rules. Our green requirements, water conservation, and our climate change items. We, we did a lot to achieve many of these goals and it's an ongoing, um, process. We'll get into that later. We hired a new building inspector slash code enforcement officer. These were all things that came directly from our strategic goals planning last year. And these were not the only things we did, but these are some of the highlights. Next slide, please.
I'll, I'll interrupt, uh, and say that I think that although we filed our housing element in January, a significant accomplishment of the city council, excuse me, and the site architectural commission was to go and, and get two hundred and twenty-five letters of intent to put in ADUs. And I think that that was a, took a lot of effort and I recognize the prior council, I recognize staff. And I recognize the, uh, I said, city council and site architectural commission. So I just wanted to add that point, Mr. Leon Aris. Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to what is the Monte Serena role, mission, vision, and values overview. I don't want to read it verbatim, but, um, it, it came about in two thousand and seventeen. I think we had the facilitator, Sean Spano back then, or Burton, or I should say, um, Councilmember Craig and Vice Mayor Wolsheimer, and since that time, we have revised in your absence, revised the role, mission, vision, and value statement a couple of times last being done in twenty twenty-two at our last goal-setting session. It's included in the packet for your review. We added some more inclusive language, get some word sniffing and some other things to it. So the updated versions was in the packet. Um, I'm not going to go through, next slide, I'm not going to go through and read what it is. But take a look at it here on the slides. We'll move on to the slide that says Monte Serena Council Values. Integrity and professionalism, transparency, openness. Next slide, performance accountability. Effective and efficient services. Next slide, please. Fiscal responsibility, quality of life for all residents. Those are our key values that we work together as a team, council level, staff level, to achieve excellence in our community and excellence in our service for our residents. Next slide, please. Want to spend very little time on the iceberg model. In addition to what we're doing today, the city, as you know, performs many, many other activities. Hiring employees, evaluating employees, paying the bills, handling, billing and planning for minutes, service calls, the list goes on and on and on, maintaining the facilities. That's what we call eighty percent of the work, um, that we do on a daily basis. About twenty percent, the amount above the water line is new work. And that, um, the idea is to accomplish those new goals and try and move those above, or excuse me, below the water line to where the eighty percent currently is. That's what this diagram depicts. Um, so today we will be choosing some new activities in order to, um, keep our work plan moving forward and to achieve some things that, um, the city needs. The council's vision and to better serve the public. We'll go on to the next slide. Real brief on the strategic planning elements. You can kind of see how the process works. We have our mission, vision, and values, our goals, our objectives, performance indicators, staff work plans. Next slide, please. So a review of the goals and objectives for twenty-two and twenty-three, and again, Councilmember Craig and Vice Mayor. We adopted, um, beginning when I came on board in twenty nineteen and going into the first goal-setting session in twenty twenty. The council wanted to adopt the strategic goals directly from the general plan and the five, the general plan being, you know, our constitution for the city, our essentially, um, document that all of our land use is based on, and what they decided to do is take the five key bullet points from that, quality of public service, community character, enhanced mobility, community safety, and environmental sustainability. And underneath those five goals, we create new objectives. So I have a proposed new objectives document for twenty-three and twenty-four in attachment five. And we will go through that in a little while. This concludes the slide presentation. Does council have any questions about anything so far?
No. What, what I'd like to do for the benefit of the council is have this a study session and a discussion. So I, I think if someone wants to say something, please jump right in, go ahead versus, you know, a more formal uh, process. I think there's more value add there. Can you go, and so what's the, what's the mobility, enhanced mobility? Can you talk about that for, for a moment, please?
So enhanced mobility are things like your, what the work of the Better Streets Commission, um, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, those types of items. How do we move people about the community? So I guess you would call it our infrastructure, our street improvement fraud, uh, program, our payment improvement program, excuse me, our C P I, all of those elements would be elements of enhanced mobility.
Yeah, so sometimes I look at, at the words and I think we could spend a bunch of time on those, but, uh, because I really don't think they're descriptive, but maybe that's just me. I think we just drive on and, and use those. I think that's a, that's a good framework.
That would be the idea. It would be a, a very broad sense of words and then we have bullet points under those words that are more descriptive, which are the tasks. I wanted to mention one more thing, um, and of course, again, the council members Turner, Mekachuk, Lahey were on board at the time. In twenty twenty, we adopted a council code of conduct policy. That's also included in the package. Um, in the staff report, again, I'm not going to go in and read through that or go through each and every detail, but I, I thought that it would be a good idea to bring this document out because Councilmember Craig and the Vice Mayor Wolsheimer were not uh, on board with the council at the time when this was adopted. So, um, generally speaking, it's something that is reviewed by the council every year. And, um, it's kind of like a silent pledge, um, that you adhere to the, the council roles, mission, values, and vision, as well as the code of conduct policy. So that's why that is included in the staff report. Getting into our goals from last year, so I have a marked up, um, version in that. Are you able to put that up on the big screen?
Councilmember Turner, you have your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yes, uh, as we go through the existing goals, I wanted to find out uh, if you will give us the time to go through each goal and make a comment for each goal, because I have uh, pretty much some questions on, on many of them. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Turner, and the objective is to um, go through each line in an organized fashion so we can keep the discussion moving because we have quite a bit to cover here. Um, but I would be commenting on the color coding, each and every line of the goals from last year. And then probably stopping at the end of each category, at the end of each category, one through five. And then at that point in time, I think if the mayor, uh, would like to call on council members to cover their questions at the end of each section, that way it will be organized. And we won't pile up too much or too little.
Just to understand our, our timeline here, how long do we have this morning? What, what, what was your thinking that, how long are we going to be here? What, what are we trying to get accomplished and in how much time? That wasn't clear to me.
Certainly. So, um, Mr. Someranos is sitting to my left. Our objective is to try to get our budget done by June twentieth, which is mentioned in the staff report. We have to get it done in June, by June thirtieth or July first in our fiscal year. That's a state law. And in order to achieve that, the strategic goals, historically, since I've been here, have happened in the springtime. And then we have a couple of pre-budget hearings based on the council's directions from the strategic goals. And then council gets an opportunity well in advance to the budget, where we choose to put the money exactly and how each dollar will be spent, uh, derived from the goal-setting session. Then we prepare the whole budget and the council subsequently adopts the budget. And then we have what's called the work plan from there, um, beginning July one through, in theory, June thirtieth of the next year, when we perform all the tasks and, um, goals highlighted uh, according to council's direction adopted in the, in the budget.
What time were you concluding? I'll make the questions difficult.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I totally went off track of your, your original question. Our plan was to have two hours today. So from nine thirty, and I know we started a bit late, uh, to eleven thirty. And the majority of the time is going to be council discussing, I hope, all the things we are going through and not me talking too much. That's why I made this slide presentation very short.
I understood.
Be more of a free.
So, so our objective is to, our deliverable coming out of this is input into the budget. And you talked about the iceberg model. Uh, we want to identify new items and then we want, that will go into the budget, but then eighty percent is recurring. Keeping the city underway. If, if I'll, I'll put this out saying, it would be nice to see the budget showing the eighty percent and then what the new initiatives are that we're going to be talking about today. So we can, we can then say, ah, yes, we talked about that in our in our, uh, goal-setting session on April first. So with that, uh, go ahead. I'm sorry, just want to make sure that it's all clear. So you're going to go through each one of these and the, the red, green, straight through, blue. Uh, we'll go through one, each one, and then we'll ask questions briefly, and I, I think we'll want to limit those questions.
Councilmember Turner, do you want to say something?
So, um, Mayor, to answer your question, yes, and I think in organized fashion here, I have it color-coded. And for instance, we can go through, you see Roman numeral one, provide quality public service. And directly from last year, the first line is maintain fiscal prudence under, as a subcategory of provide quality public services. This kind of, um, how do I say, broadens the scope of those top five level goals derived from the general plan, right? Provide quality public services. Well, what does that mean? Well, the subcategories that the council had adopted a few years ago of providing quality public service, maintaining fiscal prudence, improving governance and operations, and engaging community members. So those are subsequent goals. And underneath those subsequent goals, we have what's more like tasks, routine tasks or missions for staff to complete in conjunction with council. The first of those is increased property tax allocation for Monte Serena from the current six percent to a higher percentage. And, um, myself and Councilmember Lahey had some conversations about this while, while he was still the mayor. And at this point in time, staff is recommending, it's in red, probably eliminate this, um, from our goals because I think it would require a significant lobbying effort and I'm not certain that it would be easily obtainable. So that's why it's in red, but all of these items are open for council discussion. So I'm just going to comment on each one briefly and then we can move on. The next one is investigate additional funding for street specific maintenance. So, um, we do have staff working with the West Valley Collection and Recycling Company, and they are drafting their new service agreement for the next, I believe, ten years. And we are looking at some additional funding coming through, um, that service agreement, assuming that the board adopts it. So the reason why this one is in green, because it's kind of in between. I didn't want to cross it off the list and say, okay, we're done investigating additional funding for street specific maintenance. Later on, Mr. Wimberly will be available and we can discuss uh, what we call neighborhood improvement districts, uh, in more detail, which would be another, um, additional funding source for street improvements. Number three, study user and regulatory fees, city resource versus recovery methodology. I believe it was the finance committee worked in conjunction with staff. And we, um, were able to increase some of the fees for building permits, planning permits, and those types of things in order to help, um, bring them more in line with our, um, current cost structure for what those items were. So we, we knocked that one off the list. Consider developing a funding plan to manage city hall and future city facilities. This one is in blue because I think it would require, um, some outside help. So I wanted to put this on the list still because it was mentioned last year, but if council uh, sees merit in continuing the goal and perhaps having staff look into hiring a consultant or providing more direction on this goal, that's why it's, it's in blue because it's a little bit ambiguous staff at this point in time with what direction is required. Number five, develop requirements and review annexation of county pockets into the city on an opportunistic basis. Staff worked quite extensively on this one last year as well, in conjunction with the mayor, Alahy, as well. And it became, um, there was, I believe, a reason why Monte Serena did not go down this road in the past, or when we did go down this road in the past a couple of times, it always never seemed to cross the finish line. And in the end, I think what happens is the road maintenance that we would acquire from, um, annexing some county pockets would be, just be too great. We would be picking up a lot of deferred maintenance potentially. And as well as maintaining some retaining walls and some things that are quite costly for the amount of property tax dollars we would be receiving. We did explore the idea of, okay, well, what if we could bring those P C I's up to a good level? We had discussions like that with the county before the city of Monte Serena were to take them over. Um, but they had some difficulties with other, another jurisdiction recently where there was a lawsuit that developed and they were not happy because the jurisdiction had been accusing them of selling them a, um, bad set of streets that required more maintenance than they had thought. So that they were not too excited about, um, that particular incident. And then the conversation began to drop off. I kept trying to contact them and they, they were not real responsive to us. It started out, okay. Um, there was an idea at the end of Carl Avenue where it's, it's about, and this is when the opportunistic basis comes in, a, a small pocket of homes, it's about eight homes where it's like a fifty fifty. If we acquire it, we put up about forty or fifty thousand dollars upfront to bring it up. You know, over time, we could potentially recover that money. We could clean up that pocket. But at this point in time, that, that requires quite a bit of effort. Staff is recommending we, we move on from this idea for the time being. Now, Mayor, would you like me to take a pause here to discuss these first five points, or should I go all the way through item C? Do the whole category?
Yes. Yes, uh, I'll flip that back to council and say, should we go through Roman numeral one, A, B, and C, and then have a discussion, or should we go through? And then have a discussion or should we go through item A? One through five and then have a discussion, ask questions?
Well, they seem to be quite different, different topics. So maybe it's better. Topic, okay.
All right, council member Turner, you have a question. Go ahead and, and let's start. This will be the, the questions on item A. Go ahead, please.
Um, I wanted to ask a question about two and four, the additional funding for streets and city hall. We have discussed this, um, when we funded our Better Streets program out of the capital budget. And city hall maintenance from our general revenue budget. Are you anticipating expenses beyond what we would normally fund? Um, please explain and could you tell us what potential funding sources you are considering? Um, if you are considering raising taxes or issuing bonds, which is another way to raise taxes. Uh, I, I would suggest that we, uh, inform the residents of our city. And have them decide what we're supposed to do. So could you please comment on that two and four? I also have a question on number five, if you want me to pause at this time.
Thank you, council member Turner. So regarding two and four first. Um, what we have investigated for number two is. Not necessarily raising taxes, but raising costs for the trash service. Although that has not been adopted yet by West Valley Collection and Recycling Board. So, uh, the fees on the garbage service might increase. And we are also considering, and this is entirely up to the council. And this is totally a brand new idea, uh, to council, but. Over, and I'll cite an example and Mr. Wimberly is on the line where he may jump in. We're, we're probably going to cover this in more detail later, but we can address it now. Something called neighborhood improvement districts. So for instance, Oakmont Bruce Avenue. Um, the Better Streets Commission said we could put in all these elements to enhance neighborhood safety. Things like, um, speed bumps and bull bouts and I hope I'm on the right track, Mr. Wimberly. If you're listening, those types of things. And it would be a project that could cost half a million dollars. Well, in order to fund that project, rather than taking money from the general funds or rather than issuing bonds, one idea that. Is newly being floated today would be, well, we could possibly create a neighborhood improvement district. Staff is looking for direction from council. We are all ears on how to raise monies. To, uh, fund some of these projects that are, say, half a million dollars. Uh, that Better Streets Commission is coming up with if council sees merit in doing so. Um, because the idea is not to take money from our reserves for these larger projects that impact primarily one neighborhood. Um, we are looking, if it is going to be something that is done, come up with special funding sources. When it comes to the maintenance for the city hall and the facilities. We are looking at potentially a new, uh, community room and. That we are going to discuss later in the program as well. Um, because that ultimately will have to go out for bidding. So that we were not planning on issuing any bonding or taxes on residents. That's not even a discussion point. That we're having at this point in time.
Uh, may, may I finish my questions? I have. Yes, uh, can you explain what a neighborhood improvement district is?
We're, we're going to talk about that later, are we not?
We can discuss that later. I think it would be better to get through these items because that is mentioned in the deeper details of the staff recommendations.
I got it. Okay. Can we go to number five then? Studying annexation opportunities? Uh, I would like to understand, uh, why you are proposing to take the study off the list. Um. Let, let me, let me ask a question here. Are, have we gotten any feedback on our housing element? Cause I know Los Altos Hills got that theirs. Have we gotten one that we haven't talked about yet?
So we did receive a letter, um, yesterday afternoon. Our second set of comments back from the HCD. And staff is probably not prepared to dive into the details of that at this time, um, for discussion. We were going to go back to the consultants and have a meeting and then try to bring this council subsequently from there if need be.
Okay, so, so, um, let me just make a short comment and then I should be done with number one, A. Um. My understanding is that we have no, we, we, like you said, we have gotten feedback, but we haven't had time to look at it yet. So when a city is out of compliance with a housing element. The so-called builder's remedy, which I asked at our last meeting is invoked. And to me, that means the builders.
We cut you off here because we're going off topic and we really want to get through the questions. We don't want to hear. Uh, about things that, that should come before council in the due process. This is a study session only. I think that you've asked your questions. I will make one comment and then we'll go on. And my comment is that I believe that the, I believe, I know since I signed the contract, the ten-year hauling contract. That is there. And, uh, I think that it's worthy of looking into. The road impact fees, but there's also some, some new, uh, decisions that came out in the state of California on that. I don't want to drill into it. Let's move on, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any further questions?
I, I suggested earlier I'd go by topic. Uh, I changed my opinion on that. Now I think we should just go through the list. It's, uh. Ten twenty nine, I think we'll be stuck here. If we keep going like this, we'll endure until five o'clock and achieve nothing. Okay.
And actually, we also need to just have, uh, around the table, our own. Top knowledge, you know, book of the list. One thing that. We may want to put in studying station. That's the point. So give us some time for that.
So, being that you all have the staff report in front of you and you see the different color coatings. If we can kind of run through this items, B and C, you see the ones that are crossed off in black. You see the ones that are in blue and you see the ones that are in green. The ones in green again are recognition program for commissioners and residents. That's an ongoing thing. We are working on that. If anybody has any ideas for that, staff is welcoming that. We currently issue a certificate when somebody retires from a commission. Um, the residents, we have citizen of the year now that we developed last year in our strategic goals. They will be nominated by council in May. And, uh, they will, or how should I say, will make the announcement in May, they will be nominated by the public and then if the. Count or the mayor will announce them at our city picnic. Developing the Veterans Memorial in green as an ongoing item. So any comments on these next two categories? Again, the ones in blue are. You know, implement an annual city survey and resident feedback. We thought if we want to do that. We can approach that two ways. One would be hire a consultant to do it and outside firm. The other would be try to come up with something. And the mayor had a great idea the other day. He said, any council member who's interested in any of these ideas. You can be the liaison with staff. If somebody wants to be the, uh, champion of that. Approach staff and we could come up with the idea and present it to the full council.
Let's, let's talk about that. Spend a few minutes on that after we go through the list. Before we create our list for twenty twenty-three slash twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Moving on to Roman numeral two, maintaining community character. Or if you.
And maybe make it a little bigger as well.
Last year, one of the goals put forth was historical preservation guidelines. And I was speaking with planner Diana Perkins and. Staff determined that the best way to approach this would be to hire an outside consultant. There was discussion about the Eichler. Um, colony that we have in Monta Serena turning that or putting some kind of a historical designation on that. And that's where this idea stemmed from. Uh, Monta Serena does have the Mills Act. We do have several historical properties. Um, we don't have any official historical preservation guidelines that I'm aware of that are extended. Updating the general plan, housing element, objective standards. Part green, part black. General plan comes, you know, objective standards is done, housing element still open for discussion. Updating the general plan comes after. That's why it's green. So staying on a list, focus on inclusive community. We can consult with a DEI. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Consultant, or we can just focus on language in the general plan. We have taken great strides in the last couple of years to upgrade our value vision statement. We have the social justice award that the youth commission works on every year. So we have been taking strides. But if the council wanted to go deeper on that, looking for direction on that. SB nine ordinance updates. Um, that was a goal put forth last year. I, the council had significant discussion. We did adopt some SP nine language. Um, but should that be modified going forward? That might come into play with our housing element. That's bullet two. I'll move into bullet three. If we have no questions.
We're going to be going.
Okay. Enhancing mobility for residents, the complete highway nine sidewalk gap project. Or it says, complete the highway nine sidewalk gap project. This was a project when I came on board. It was in discussion. It was about a half a million dollar item. I had sought grant funding from the state twice, from the federal government once. I felt like last year we got close on getting funding from the federal government when they were adopting their. Infrastructure package. However, the money went elsewhere and then we got the disappointment letter from an issues office. Um, now the project is somewhere around one point one million dollars plus another hundred thousand dollars for the design revisions. Little background on the project. It would be a wonderful addition to the community. I just believe it's a little bit out of our financial reach and working with Caltrans. And we put sixty-eight thousand dollars together for the design. It took them about two years to get the comments back to us because. Of the pandemic and such, and then the comments come back and it's almost like. But you gotta do this and this and this and this. It's like pushing the, the, uh, moving the goalposts, what we call it. At this point in time, I'd say we move away from that idea. And if Caltrans ever wanted to put that in. Someday when they did some improvements on highway nine, we would be. Supportive of them, but I would say we don't put up the one point two million dollars. Update the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. That is an ongoing item, not completed yet, but. Still going through better streets. Maintaining community safety. We've been, at our last meeting, we discussed the NICP for Monta Serena. Update the city of Monta Serena wireless ordinance. Our, um, new city attorney will be working on that. Um, taking over from the work of Mr. Ruten. Um, let's move on to item number five, enhance environmental sustainability. Evaluating considering the reach codes for twenty twenty-two. We're very proud of achieving that goal. Meeting green requirements, water conservation, developing climate change resolution, encouraging. And supporting the move to lower carbon emissions in Monta Serena. We have had significant progress. With those goals, not just through rich crude codes, but through, um. Our. Like the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, we have on the table now. Um, a survey out for the leak blowers. Should we move away from those, um, gas-powered leak blowers? There were some, um. Items coming down from the state of California with the water heaters that have to be now, um, not no longer gas, but electric. And I think it's also, uh, gas burning furnaces. Those are going to be phased out. Just a number of things that have been, um, written into our building codes. So we continue to achieve those items. If there's anything council wants to add, oh, the electric charging stations, of course, was a big one for us this year. Uh, into the reach goes. So if there's any things council wants to, um, include further on that, let us know. Review and implement urban forestry alliance. I think urban forestry alliance is no longer. An entity that was coming out of the county. So it just went away, came and went. Review opportunities to improve drainage, enhance flood controls. There are some items. It's always an ongoing thing. We spent a lot of money this winter and a lot of time this winter clearing out storm drains and doing some things. And there's. Items in the packet, um, in the agenda that we will cover. That further detail. Promote low water and low fire landscaping alternatives for residents. I think that comes, um. In the general plan updates as well as along the way, we're talking about, uh, things like swimming pools. Receive correspondence from the public, um, should we put limitations on sizes of pools and those types of things? Promote electric vehicle charging stations. We just covered that. So that's a quick run-through of last year's goals and what we have done.
So now if there's questions before we get into the next, uh, part of the agenda. Questions on any of this, or do you want to handle it as we go through the upcoming component? I'm looking at.
I'd say we handle it as we're going through. Putting together this year's goals.
Agreed. Okay. Do we have a comment from Ms. Turner, council member Turner?
Um, it's in the chat. So that's just related to.
Oh, it's technical? Okay. Sorry. I just saw something flash on the screen. I don't have my computer in front of me. I would be out of batteries.
As, as, um. As we are, um, thinking about next year's goals. You know, think of the ones that are in red, the ones that are in blue, the ones that are in green. Remember those are ongoing. The ones that were crossed off, of course. And then the new set of goals, uh, if you said dump all the red ones, we agree with staff, then we'll just eliminate those. The ones in green. Continue on that path. The ones in black will, will cross those off and then we'll add the new ones. That's the idea. This is an evolving document. Um, moving on to what we call our. Proposed goals. Get back into the staff report here. If you could pull that up for us. These are items generated by staff largely through engineering and public works. And a lot of these items jumped out at us because it's kind of a lot of deferred maintenance that has accumulated as well as things we've noticed. From the plethora of storms we've had this year. Um. And I'm hoping that you all had a chance to take a run through this list. Mr. Wimberly is available to answer questions in greater detail about the ones that require the engineering prowess and public works prowess. I will start with. How, how would you like to move through this, mayor? You want to just go through each one and investigate additional funding for street specific maintenance? We. We were talking about getting into greater detail on that, um. Earlier, you mentioned your work with the collection and recycling committee. It's in the, in the budget there.
West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority.
They changed the name on me. Sorry. Thank you.
So, so let, let's just go through here if we could. I, I would propose this as a process. We go through when we say item one, what's the funding requirement? It's kind of what is it? And then just go through quickly so that we understand what the total ask is here that, that we're going to see in the budget. And then I think we can circle back and then drill into more detail, but also maybe add some, some newer items that we want to. That council wants to see and maybe have that discussion.
I just, can I just make one quick comment? So I would look at it, at, at something like item one as almost something that staff is doing every day. They're always looking to get additional funding and they're always looking for ways to maximize our bank for the buck. So is that really a, a goal for the year or is that?
And it goes away next year? Is that what you're saying? That's when, when it stops?
Yeah, you know, it, it just seems like this, this is something that should be on every single. Year's goals or it should just be part of the everyday job of, of our city staff. And that's, that's why we put it in the green category as an ongoing item. And specifically, it was brought up. Last year as a goal to go finds. I think it was the road impact fees that we looked into. And as was mentioned earlier, there was a challenge or some, there's new state legislation about. Uh, adding road impact fees through billing permit processes and things like that.
Oh, okay. Just, just a second. Let's put it. I, I, I absolutely agree with your point in that it shouldn't be an ongoing thing. The road impact fees are separate in this year. So let's. Have that as an agenda item to, to have staff report on road impact fees.
Yes. Now, if there's, and if there's a specific grant that, that we know is coming up, I think those kinds of things could go into this kind of list.
That sounds good.
Can I, can I, before we.
Can I, can I, before we, can I ask a quick question? How many of these? I, I, do you have? I see one, I see two. Are there forty or?
No, thank goodness. There's only about eight. Let's see.
So, so one, one, it has a no, no quote cost to it, right?
So for instance, the only thing, um, that deviates from what council member Craig just mentioned would be if. Council wanted us to pursue other funding ideas such as neighborhood improvement projects or neighborhoods. Assessment districts to fund some of these projects that the Better Streets Commission has come up with. And, um. If Mr. Wimberly wants to elaborate on that.
Let, 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 let's go, let's go through some, just briefly so that we, we have an understanding of the landscape, please. So, so put the slide back up, the report, and I'll just start writing them down here. So one is not really a cost to it. Number two, study user and regulatory fees. Okay, like there's no, are you proposing we do that again in twenty? Twenty-three, twenty-four, that it's a line item in the, in the budget?
I would say this would be something that we should continue doing. You know, again, there was a discussion on the road.
So, so the, so the answer is it's ongoing, is, as, as council member Craig said. It's normal course business. Okay, item three. Hire a new city engineer. Okay, what do we think the number is on that?
Probably, I, I was considering, um, hiring a recruiting service because I have had the job rec opened for. Um, about six months and I think to hire the recruiter, that would be about thirty thousand dollars. And of course, there's the salary and the full load of the, the position, which is probably something like. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on an annual basis.
That's something that has to be done.
But that is a position that should be built, yes.
Yep, okay, got it. What is number four?
Organizing from the city's Stormwater Pollution Direction Program. And which includes administration development, construction, project review, field observation, et cetera, et cetera. Um, this, the. How do I say this? The Clean Water Program in the state of California have been adding a lot of these. Mandates to us.
What's the number on it?
Mr. Wimberly, do you have any idea what the cost of?
I thought it was at the bottom there. Isn't it something like a hundred, a buck and a quarter or something?
That, that's for the city parking lot. So that's one that's more tangible to us. Um, this one here is more or less, we have to come back with, to you with. Some type of figures.
Okay, but that's, that's, we're directing, we're being directed to do number four. It's not.
It's what we call kind of an unfunded mandate, or I would say it, it was a mandate for some time. But we really need to start paying attention to it.
Got it, okay.
It was, yes.
Five, update the C I, five years C I P.
Yes, I think that speaks for itself.
Is, is there a cost to that that we're, we're gonna have to incur, or is that part of what the city engineer would do in his or her position?
That is correct with input from the Better Streets Commission.
Okay, so number six?
Number six, seek the city council approval and implement the. For the city, the, the twenty-two, twenty-four C I P, not necessarily just for the Better Streets Commission, what they would want. So this would include the, um, community room. That has, the figures need to be updated on that. Um, as well as the new pavement improvement project. Update the pavement improvement project and we spend hopefully about three hundred thousand dollars annually on that.
So there's our, A, A, we, we've got a hard number of three hundred. That would go into the budget. That's, that's what we have. That's a decision. Do we want to include that? As a priority in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four? Okay, then B is the, is the community center building project?
Yes. There's also the idea of hiring a, um, project manager for that project. So we have to send out a. Request or proposals on that.
Community, just, just scroll up for a sec. I know that we're gonna. Have a special meeting dedicated to the community center building project next week. But the number in there, did I see six hundred K? Is that in there somewhere?
Yes, right here.
Yeah, I think that number is one point two, just to give you a heads up. But someone's been funding. Okay, okay, I, I got that one. Then the parking lot?
The parking lot, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We spoke a little bit about that at our last meeting.
Okay, number four, or is that D? I'm sorry, D?
D, subcategory D, the idea of having a city vehicle that can be used by. Public Works, um, building, planning, forty-five thousand dollar ask. Um, you know, it's something that I think will enhance safety. People will not be wondering who is pulling up.
Okay, I, let's, we'll circle back and go drill into each one of these, but, but that one's forty-five K.
Yes.
Plus o- ongoing operating costs, right?
Yes.
Okay, capital forty-five, and then E?
E is the citywide storm drain catch basin cleaning project.
A hundred?
Hundred thousand.
Got it. Then?
A couple items that. Are not, well, the first item on the list goes for. Under the fiscal stability category, um, we had discussed this between yourself. You know, the finance committee members and Mr. Samronos. Turning the budget into a bi-annual process, so not really a cost item, just an efficiency item.
To your budget?
Yes, a bi-annual budget document. I think that would require council resolution. And then we discussed briefly, um. Think you may have mentioned over at the last meeting, modification to our investment policies to achieve greater financial returns on our savings. G bills, certificates of deposits versus lay funds and checking account returns.
So that's, that would be a cash inflow, not a cash outflow, but it would be some sort of. A, an investment in, in understanding what the policy is and what our alternatives are underneath. I've got it.
Not all of these cost money. Some of them can make money. And then for community character and public safety and. Um, consider making the city's tree ordinance, as was depicted by Mrs. Ziegler, more comprehensive. In other words, look into private trees which may interfere with the public right of way by dropping branches or falling down in storms, et cetera. Uh, should we, um, take more scrutiny of private property homeowners to care for their trees?
That was a big thing in List Hall post. Okay, sorry, I, is there a cost to that?
Um, there will all be staff work.
Staff cost and, and.
And enforcement, so there's no real cost other than. Um, in-house, I think we can handle that unless we had to hire an arborist or some outside consultant, but I believe it would be. Minimal cost.
Okay, then you've got your artist commission.
Yes, it has been proposed in the last couple of years, um, pre-little libraries, potentially birdhouses. There are those boxes that they wrap, um, utility boxes that they wrap. Um, so those ideas to enhance, um, the parts in the community. There's probably many schools of thought on that. Um. We are a rural community. Do we want it to stand out like Big City Artscape or? Do we do it in a way that's uniquely Montessorino?
There's no number on that one, correct?
No, no number of significance.
Okay.
It's just a concept and then at this time we would put it out there and the council saw merit, we add it to the list and then we would come up with figures later.
Yeah, then the next one is.
The Winchester Boulevard, what's I call the Billy Jones Wall. I researched that two or three years ago. Uh, could use some improvement sidewalk is lifting in front. There's supposed to be a second phase of the Winchester, um, Boulevard. Enhancement project. We talked about that with the previous, um. Public Works Director and Will Scous, who has moved on to Cupertino, um, but the wall at the time I had it bid, it was two hundred and something thousand dollars. The sidewalk is lifting in front of the wall. If that would be a complete rebuild of the wall, um.
Who owns that wall?
It's right on the property line. I would say that it potentially is owned by the three homes that were, um, probably built. Or developed at the time or the developer put the wall there on the property line. Um, so technically, they could be responsible. We can be responsible fifty-fifty. We would have to research that, but it hosts the plaque of the Billy Jones site. It was dedicated back in the seventies. It is a part of our community character. There are several large of our favorite type of trees growing there that have lifted and damaged the wall. So that one requires quite a bit of effort to and coordination with the residents to try to.
So we don't have a number on that?
I would say it's probably three hundred, between two and three hundred thousand dollars. And or we can potentially have funding from the second phase of the Winchester project. But I put it in this category as something to think about, um, as well as potentially if council wanted to. Put a mural on the wall or something.
Okay, and is there anything else? Is this the end of the staff report?
This is the end of these ideas. These are something just to start our discussion. And I know council probably has goals of their own, but this is.
Okay, but it, but in terms of giving some direction to the budget. Where we're gonna say, okay, we, we, we need to include these items or not. So, so what I got is. Item three is the recruiter in, in saying. We will hire a city engineer in, or twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. So that's, that's one item, right? Then we've got, uh, was four I wrote down unfunded. That there's no funding requirement for four. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then five is doing the capital improvement program. To me, that seems like that should be done. That's just city business. Then A is three hundred K. B, we need a project manager, uh. And that, and then the total cost will be somewhere around one point two. However, how it's funded is a different matter. C is a hundred and twenty-five, D is forty-five, E is a hundred. Seven is doing a two-year budget and then working on our investment, uh, plan or plan. Then the other ones, you've got a tree ordinance in there. You, we need to deal with the arts and then. The wall on Winchester and what's called the Billy Jones Wall, that's two to three hundred thousand. Did, did I summarize that reasonably accurately?
Yes, it was all, yes.
Okay, so by eleven thirty, uh, and it is ten forty-two. We need to give direction to staff at a very minimum on these items. Is that correct?
If council sees merit and the ideas, yes, please.
Okay, perhaps now, uh, I will defer to council, but what I'd like to do is. Uh, hear from, cause it seems like most of this is in, uh, public works. Area, so perhaps we can have Mr. Wimberly, uh, lead us through that, starting with the, um. With the city hiring a city engineer. Because that's the, the resource that will get these, many of these things done.
Could I make it again?
Absolutely.
If council has other ideas, you should probably go with the mixed now. So you can consider all of it together and that kind of, I just view these and not have.
I would be certainly open to that. The rest of council that's here?
Yeah, I think we need to, otherwise we won't run out of time before council has got a chance.
Uh, well, I'll put in, on that, I have been making a little list myself. And I think that, uh, if you.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Councilmember Turner does want me to reach her comments.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
She did say that the rules for speaking freely and more openly seem to apply.
Could you speak up a little?
So the rules for speaking freely and more openly seems to apply only to the men on this council. And I do not appreciate Mayor Mekachuk's authorization actions and. Constant deep tone he frequently uses with me.
Duly noted. With that, I will repeat, I was hesitant on, uh, having people appear remotely. And I think that appearing remotely makes it more difficult and that was a choice. So we agreed to that. Uh, and we're moving forward. If councilmember Turner would like to say something, please raise your virtual hand and we will do our best to, uh. Res, have you respond as fast as possible. Getting back to what I think the items are, you know, when, when I speak with other people. In other jurisdictions, what really sets us apart is customer service here in the city of Monte Sereno. And I think, uh, Mr. Leonardi, you said that, you know, we kept going during the pandemic. And I wanna get that behind us, but, and get back to, to business as usual as adjusted for the pandemic. Having said that. When I look at, yeah, what we can do, I think customer service should be, should be up there. We should always be looking at customer service. Um, as part of that also, community involvement, and you did mention community involvement. Uh, we've got the picnic. We're trying to involve the community more. I think that that's, that's very important. And then in terms of, of the city of Monte Sereno. Um, it would be nice if we were an employer of choice. I think that the city of Monte Sereno should be a place where, gee, I wanna go work there, right? And not, oh, you know, I want, I think people should be proud of working here. I think. That, you know, when people are smiling, it's a lot more fun. It's a lot easier to go to work. If we wanna hire a city engineer. At being an employer of choice, being a good place to work. I think helps move the needle. If someone's saying, gee, do I wanna take this job? Yes or no? So those are a couple of the things that, that I would like to see and I don't think that they cost money per se. Um, uh, uh, let me open it up to, to other members of council and perhaps, and, and then the other thing that I wanted to. To say is that when I reflect back, having been here a few years now. What does it take to move something that's, that's. A strategic priority that gets funded and then you actually make it happen? I think that it requires a champion and advocate, someone on council that says, you know what? I think I wanna help make this happen. I wanna, you know, volunteer my. You know, that into the council members' effort to help getting it done. And I think that's, that's really key and I would put forth that, you know, it's almost like we, we. Need to say, who's the advocate of this? If you wanna put something on the list, are you gonna be the advocate? Yes or no? And, and it's like an unfunded thing, you know? If you don't have funding, it's not gonna get done. If you don't have an advocate, it's probably not going to get done. But if it's an ongoing requirement, this needs, this is how the city should operate, then, you know. You shouldn't be an advocate. It's just like, that's, those are, those are, that's an operational thing. So those are kinda my, my thoughts on strategic initiatives.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, for being an advocate of what you're talking about. My first one is about the safety and it ties into what Ms. Seidler, uh. Express in her letter. I think, uh, I have some ideas how to deal with these trees. Uh, my biggest fear is that, uh, well, people outside now, outside now. The weather is nice now. Two weeks from now, everybody will have forgotten what happened. And, um, nothing will happen in the city. So I want to make sure that we do something about these trees. Um, I got several letters from residents, um, Mont Ellen was one of them. With a radical proposal to have all these eucalyptus trees on Highway nine removed, all of them. Because they will calm down. All, they will all come down over the next couple of years. Um, I think within the city, we should also, um, expedite. Um, I think within the city, we should also expedite people's ability to do something about the trees. For example, some cities have temporarily suspended permit requirements for tree removal. You want to want to cut down a tree, go ahead, cut it down, we'll deal with it afterwards. Um, other things are keeping sidewalks clear. We don't have a lot of sidewalks in the city. And some of them are not clear, you know, you can't walk there because there's a bush or a crack in the sidewalk. So this falls probably under the streets commission, some of it, and some of it is new. And I think the the main thing is uh safety and continuity of uh electricity is involved here. I think we need to probably take some radical steps here before the next winter starts. And my other one is a more of a comment, really. Um, I've watched the better streets commission, and this is not a criticism of anybody. Um, they have great plans. There are always great plans, but it seems to me, uh, looking at it from a distance, that very little action that actually gets implemented. It's lack of funding. And I like the plans, I like all of the plans, great suggestions, but at some point, something needs to happen. And how how do we get it done? How do we get these things implemented? Now, you know, there's a lot of dollars involved in that, I'm sure. Uh, another one is, uh, I think you can call this strategic. Making our council meetings more efficient. Um, reminds me of a story. I I worked at a company once, we had an executive staff meeting every other week from eight o'clock in the morning until four o'clock in the afternoon, every other week. It's crazy. After a while, somebody had a great suggestion. It was a little toy horse. And if somebody kept beating a dead horse, we throw a hundred and fifty more. Got three dead horses, your time to speak was over. Well, I'm I'm not saying we should do that, but I think we should think of our ways to make our meetings uh be a little bit more efficient. Um, I got some feedback from residents on our public hearings in these in the council meetings. They're very frustrated, and always have been, I think, but the first of all, with the time limit, the three minutes, but I think that's common practice. But they say they never get any feedback. They speak on a subject. We listen, we say, okay, thank you, and then.
Is that during a public hearing or is that during public comment?
Like verbal communications. Probably both a little bit, yeah. Anyway, it's it's a hard thing to fix because sometimes people bring up a subject that's not on the agenda. And we can't really react to it during the meeting. I can imagine for residents, it's been very frustrating. They take the time to come here, bring up the subject, and then it just disappears, nothing ever happens. I think we need to pay more attention to that. Um, the other thing that I I've decided to do is I talked to Rob Moore of the Los Catos Town Council. He sends out a um I'm not sure if it's weekly or monthly.
I don't think it's newsletter.
And I'm going to do that also, and I would recommend all the council members to do that also. Have to be a little careful, and I'm going to have a discussion with our lawyer, new lawyer on that. Uh, what can we say? What can we not say? Um, that is both bits into the how to engage more with our residents. Um, coming back to making it, it reminds me, coming back to making the council needs more efficient. I think one of the reasons that we have so few people attending in person or um on Zoom is that it's it's sometimes very hard, very painful to listen into these meetings. Because, yeah, it can be very painful. I can imagine for residents, and some some of them get frustrated, they just hang up and never come back. So I think it's all of our responsibility to make it more efficient and more interesting. Thank you.
So my list had something to do with trying to make our website a little bit better. And actually to capture and retain some of the history that we are generating here inside of my Sereno. And when I look at our our latest version of the website, I I'm disappointed that we don't have a very robust history. For example, our council meetings only go back through two thousand twenty. And even when you go back and look through all of the historical um meetings that that we had, all we have is the agenda. And we have the minutes of the meeting, but we don't have the recordings, we don't have the video of them anymore. And a lot of this stuff we used to have, and it's just kind of kind of a shame that it just kind of went away. And I I'd like to see some kind of a scum works project at least to to rebuild that whole infrastructure and that history of mine, so we know. I think a lot of it's valuable. I think a lot of it is helpful, especially if you're trying to research an item that you're going to bring forward to the council, go back and say, well, look, back in two thousand fifteen, the council made this type of ruling. And I would like to see that ruling applied to me or reverse that. But somehow there's no way to go back through the records of the city unless you do a lot of public record requests. And and that just puts additional burden on staff. And a lot of people, again, just kind of building on the customer service thing, they just throw up their hands and say, you know, it's it's not even worth it. And then they just end up bad mouthing the 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 whole city infrastructure. So that would be one of my goals that I would like to see implemented. Yeah. I can't assign a dollar figure to it. That's why I said it probably has to be something that gets worked in as we're making improvements to the website, as we're pulling back all of the archival documents, but this system, from what I can see, can handle what I just mentioned. It's just a matter of somebody putting the information in there.
So I believe I I was here during some of that transition, and I think it had to do with uh the new uh retention, right, that came into place, and there was discussion in regards to how much, you know, a lot of the city that we can keep and to the purpose of also it, but everybody does request something, they always submit other records requests, and we're usually very long in terms of, you know, turn around time to provide them with information. So, yeah, I and I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and and I know that there were a number of times that we had the the benefit of the city manager who was here for nineteen years. And when an issue came before the council, it was like, oh, yeah, I I I remember that, but, you know, unfortunately, we don't have that institutional memory here anymore. And yeah, I'm not saying that we can't find all those records, but it'd be nice if the public could find them very easily, because, for example, uh, there was an issue with a a a property over off of um off of Winchester, and the owner came in and he wanted to put a uh an addition on his house. But it turned out that he actually had a covenant with another neighbor. But there was, the only reason that that came up was because the city manager happened to say, hey, I happen to see that this is coming across your desk. Did you know that this was going on? And that's how we avoided a major issue. But now all of that information that was researched and put forward and brought forth in the council meeting is no longer on our website anywhere. So I I just think it's a shame because, again, we're 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 making history, but we're not recording it, we're not saving it anywhere. Um, maybe I would would like to circle back to that, but I'd also like to hear what Java didn't perhaps Rowena have to say.
Yeah, I was going to yield to Councilmember Rowena Turner to go ahead and hear any comments, because no.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, uh, you feel the way you do, like, but uh maybe Megachuk is trying to run a really efficient meeting, and sometimes the moments might come, which, but this should not be taken personally. So please go ahead.
Councilmember Turner?
So how much time do I have to speak, may I ask?
You can, I would put forth that you can speak and you can and and outline what you would like to see as our strategic goals, but once you start repeating yourself, I would ask that you not repeat yourself, just.
I I have, I I can't, I can barely repeat myself. I can barely get words in. So please let me speak if you want me to speak. If you don't, then let's let's call it a day for me. But I do have some comments, and I think, you know, you have, you you're the mayor, but I'm a council member, I have the right to speak as well.
Go ahead.
You count, your vote counts as one, and my vote counts as one. So please let me speak. Yeah, I wanted to go into uh engaging the community, uh, implement an annual survey. Uh, I just wanted to say that I fully support this goal. However, when we do a survey, it has to be one that that is uh accountable, that is responsible, that we can actually um serve, have uh accountability for it. Next door is totally inadequate, and I have seen many fake accounts, so I would trust that we don't use that. The next one is um maintain the community character, uh, updating our our general plan. Uh, it appears that um HCD's response to to the cities uh is something that we we should do, and I support that. Um, the other one is uh additional NICP for Montesereno. I wanted to look at that because NICP, two NICPs in the long run for Montesereno is not adequate. Um, the NICP is intend is intended to support a neighborhood. So as as we're looking at this, the NICP at City Hall only supports walking distances for the residents and for the volunteers. So in the long run, we would probably need some for Keto, uh, some on Bicknell and uh Twin Creeks. Um, the other one is um environmental sustainability. Uh, once again, I would like to find out what this program is and why we we have chosen to cut it. So those are my comments. Uh, I have a comment, though, on also hiring a new city engineer. In this item, you make a distinction between engineering and public works. And currently, they're combined, uh, and you want to hire two engineers. Uh, I'm I'm a little bit concerned about the cost that it would take the city to have two additional employers. So can we look at that and prioritize that? Let me see if I I have some other ones. Um. Our goals for fiscal stability. I think that biannual budget uh would make sense. And I absolutely agree that we should have a higher earning interest rates in our long-term cash balances. I would like to suggest that we look at short-term T-bills with three to six months maturities as well. I think it's important to uh consider how we prioritize our expenses and projects, like the council have said. And we must do things that are required by law. Then we have things that we need to improve the quality of life in our city. Um, I see things like the pavement improvement pro- program and the storm drain program is absolutely essential. Thank you for letting me speak, and I appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. Those are very useful suggestions, and they're appreciated. Uh, I I just have one project, and I and I will stand behind it as an advocate. Uh, and that has to do with what Councilmember Turner has said, that we should abide by the law. And the law we've been confronted with is the housing element law, it really, you know, coming down to us. We we hope to get a housing element program fast, uh, based on our ADU. The critical thing, uh, uh, there was one housing element that has been approved, I think, is the Orlando 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 housing plan. And therefore, there was a lot of affordable housing. Uh, Montesereno has no land really to build a affordable housing as such without destroying the center of the city. However, we have done a great thing with the ADU projects, and we have two hundred ADUs hopefully that will be built. Uh, I think one thing Montesereno should budget for is providing subsidies to people who are going to be living in the ADUs. They will encourage our teachers and our other individuals who are in the city and close by uh to find affordable housing within our vicinity. So I I was, uh, and 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 I I was, yesterday, I was at the West Valley Community um, and and was funded in there. It was a great appearance, a poor people there, uh, and the chefs of compassion is what they call it, I mean, some good food. So they also serve chima, which I wasn't too excited about, but they had some good food food there. Uh, there is about another three hundred dollars, the tickets were like one seventy-five, so they raised some money from that. A lot of local officials were there, Joe Smith was there, the Assembly members and some other other city councils, Rob Moore was there. Uh, the stories of people, a couple of stories, uh, heartbreaky stories, they they told the audience, they gave us money. And the main story was that these people were really homeless and had nowhere to go and then uh, and then struggled, but once they found a home, you know, the care changed. Well, there was actually working for a kind of and homeless much. So I I think providing housing should be an important aspect of mine, so you know, in any way we can. Uh, we do have, and one thing I'd ask, uh, our financial officer to give some props on how much money we have, and that we're making any profit or loss over the last year. If you were a business, I don't know if you have answered to that question as to the last one year, ten year, how much, so far, whether we've lost money or made money based on how much uh, what our expenses are. But I would suggest we look at that and see if we can set aside a a dollar amount. You know, it could be five percent of our net profits every year, or it could be a hundred thousand dollar limit every year. Um, but it could it could also be a match project where Montesereno says, okay, we'll put in a hundred grand, but you, West Valley Housing Community Element, or somebody else will find us another hundred thousand, so we can double our debt back. And in that way, we provide subsidies on our ADUs, and that could be part of our CD element also, it will help our our housing element to pass, hopefully, if we can show that we're committed to helping our building affordable housing in the city. So that that would be my goal. Um, there is a, all the housing element bills that have come down from the uh, government research so far, I look at them more as trickle housing legislation, which is, you know, let's build more houses for the developers, that they make a ton of money, and hopefully about five, five affordable houses will come out of that. I mean, I I I understand Senator Ishaab is now introducing what she calls an affordable housing development book, and which may be more directed than giving housing elements. So there may be other subsidies that are available. But I think what is going to be these to make commitment, we don't have land, but we do have funding, especially if we for reserve level, just supposed to be a five million, and we had six million or six and a half, we have more funding, and we don't have to spend it all at one time. As long as we can budget and spend it in a, you know, reasonably prudent fiscal manner, you know, five percent of the budget or a hundred thousand. Maybe I would, so I'd like to suggest we look at that. Thank you.
Um. What I would, if if we can continue with a discussion, and it's it's five after eleven, uh, I'd like to raise, I'd like to address a number of issues that were raised. And I won't go in a particular order here, uh, just what I wrote down, but I heard improve council meetings. And that ties into engaging people more, and it also ties into uh, what Councilmember Craig said about, you know, understanding the the history when you go to research something. And I've been frustrated by the that exact same issue. It's like, I know I've seen this before, where is it now? And it and but that gets back to self-service. So in a way, you know, if you do a public records request, that costs us time and money, but if you can go and look at it yourself, self-service, then you've you've avoided that cost. So in terms of improving council meetings, and I think uh Councilmember Turner uh raised that just a few minutes ago, um, saying that she didn't feel that I was giving her appropriate time. And I think that we should put in the budget to have a study session where we have a facilitator come in and work on just more effective council meetings. What are the leading practices? That, you know, and you would be the beneficiary of that next year. Um, uh, Vice Mayor Wolchimer. But I I think that that's really important. So so I I think that that should be a straight. But I, I think that that's really important. So, so I, I think that that should be a strategic priority for us. Um, improving council meetings and that dovetails into the, the website. I would absolutely support that. And if, if we have to put some budget in there for, for enhancing our website, I think we should do that. In, in terms of the NICP, I believe, as I mentioned in our council meeting uh last week, that that's important. But I also believe we need to take an integrated approach, as Vice Mayor Wolchimer said. That we have to understand the different projects that we've got underway. For example, the parking lot that has to be done and, and other things. Um, but but an NICP doesn't do any good if there's no one to staff it. And I received an email that I think uh city manager Leon Artis was on the chain from the chief of police. And she said basically, you need to have more volunteers. And she also raised the issue that Los Gatos paid for the NICP at Dave's Avenue because it affects it, it supports a big part of Los Gatos. I didn't know that. So I think that we should have as a strategic priority, addressing public safety, one of which is the NICP and then as well the tree ordinance. And I, and I looked at what Los Altos Hills has done over the past couple of years. And they've been looking at it from a buyer perspective. They've been working with their residents. They have a relaxed tree ordinances. And I heard uh in a social situation that someone was complaining of, of a neighboring jurisdiction and they had to, even though they wanted to take a big eucalyptus tree down, it cost them over two hundred dollars and time to do that. And I'm like, that's crazy. You know, we should, we, the city of Monte Sereno should be nimble enough that we can do things to help our residents improve public safety and emergency address. So I think that tree ordinance dovetails in with the NICP and other things. Um, in terms of the Billy Jones wall, that I'll, I'll just call it the two to three hundred K we're gonna need for that. I'm looking at that thinking, gee, is that really historic? And, and who's the beneficiary of that? And shouldn't that really be part of the homeowners and maybe we go fifty fifty on, on doing something? But to put a mural up whilst some people see that, oh, there's a mural there, you know, someone wants to tag it, you know, or whatever. That's not a good thing. But um, I don't know if that's consistent with our rural uh heritage and, and what we're trying to promote the city of Monte Sereno to be. So I'm sort of torn on that one, but funding wise, I think that we, we at a maximum, we go fifty fifty with the homeowners on that. Um. You know, electricity, there's been a number of people that have raised electricity as an issue. And if you want to try to move the needle with PG&E, that's a tough one. Um, but that's where we really need to have a regional voice. And I heard that with Matt Mahan at his mayor, mayoral meeting for the county, like the city of Monte Sereno will get lost in the rounding. We really need to have a regional approach to dealing with the CPUC and PG&E. Um, so those are inter, and, and let me also cir, circle back. In terms of customer service, I think that's absolutely critical. But I really think we need to have office hours, known office hours for when people are here, including the city manager. I really think that's important, that we, we have city, city manager hours. And to get to your point, uh, Vice Mayor Wolchimer, in terms of improving the, our meetings and, and people being wanting to speak and, and not feeling intimidated, people don't understand that why they have a three-minute uh timing. We had a gentleman approach the, the dais the other day and hand out materials. That was, that would generally speaking be prohibited. You have to ask permission to approach the dais, you know, and what I wanted to, and I'm just using that as an example. What I am doing is I'm gonna have, have office hours as recommended by the city manager back in January. So that people could come and, and I could coach them and explain things to them, how, how our meetings work. I think that would, that's part of community involvement. So I've kind of gone on and on, but those are my, my comments. And, and can we have a checkpoint with, with staff uh as to, you know, you've heard we did a round robin of the council members. We talked about the numbers, you kind of raised the awareness of that. Um, and you've heard what our priorities are. Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I, I I did want to say one more thing. The city of Monte Sereno, we don't have many resources, but also we don't have homeless encampments like other jurisdictions do. And I was at, at a meeting with uh the uh town with town council members from Los Gatos. And one of the things that they do is they fund um uh showers in uh Los Gatos. I think it's at the United Methodist Church. And what they do is they provide showers every couple of weeks. I, I, I actually, I think it's only once a month for the homeless and they're kind of the permanent homeless in Los Gatos. And at one of our meetings uh with the community center, someone raised the issue, gee, what would happen if a homeless person wants to use our showers? Well, first of all, you have, what the church does, the, the Methodist church, they have, they pay for someone to clean the shower. So that program is underway once a month because they have to, they have to use the facility, then they have to clean it. I think if we could fund at least once a month, you know, match Los Gatos funding for that, I think that would be a contribution. And then the other thing in terms of lowering the cost of housing, one of the things that we wanted, that one of the benefits of doing the community center that essentially is a mid-size ADU is it could lower the cost for, and provide ideas for people that want to create a lower-cost ADU. And if you have a lower cost of building an ADU, then you can charge less rent. If you charge the same rent, you know, then you're earning more profits, but you know, that would contribute to, to lowering the cost of, of ADUs. And I'll just open it up. Al, council member Turner wants to say something. Go ahead, please.
Councilmember Turner, if you can, let me respond to Mayor Megachuck for a minute.
Can I, can I go first? I would have been raising my hand for quite some time here.
Go for it.
Um, I, I totally agree with Ma, uh, Mayor Megachuck's uh comments on the homeless. I think once a month, when we have our community center or as frequently as possible, we should invite them to take showers and, and ask them to help us clean some of the um facilities that we have. Uh, also, um, making Monte Sereno Community Hall as warming centers would be a great idea. So thank you for that um comments that you have.
If I may comment on that, on your behalf, I, I don't think that's what the mayor said. He said we should once a month contribute to what Los Gatos is doing, you know, organize something in our own facility.
But, but I agree that we should, we should open up our community center to the homeless as well. Thank you.
So, so let, let me respond to that because I think uh Vice Mayor Wolchimer heard me since he's right beside me. What I said was right now, Los Gatos has a program where they spend money once a month to have a third party provide showers. I think we should do that as well in the same facility as part of the same program. Because it gives that program economies of scale. The people that are their customers or clients, they know to go there. They've got an installed base, if you will. If we would help them give more services, it's scalable to some extent. Sorry.
You're repeating yourself.
Yeah.
Sorry, man. That's okay. I, I really wanted to address the problem, not just provide showers. Showers are nice, but they probably cost a quarter and you can go down to a park and take a shower, yeah. Uh, we don't have a homeless problem, but we have an affordability problem. And our city is accused of not taking care of the DEI inclusion and by not being able to provide the affordable housing. We need to step up and figure out a way to do that. Uh, that's our role and it's going to help us with getting our housing element through. And so we really, you know, so if you think of spending three hundred thousand on painting a wall and then say we don't have money to subsidize affordable housing, you know, it gives us the same negative tone to the upset world. We're just a rich community, um, that cares more about, you know, you know, arts and everything is very important. But affordability for, and I'm talking about teachers and other residents or even our own staff, I mean, if they could live, you know, a block away or two blocks away from here in an affordable ADU, uh, it is a, to carry up to twelve square foot, four and very good housing for that. That's what I try and focus on. And I think it could be a matching thing where it's, it would match it if somebody else is, the money's substantial.
Other comments? I think we continue. Is this valuable? Uh, Steve?
Yeah, yes, I'm doing a summary of, yeah, what I'm hearing.
If you could connect all the dots, go, go ahead.
And by the way, I, I like Councilmember Turner's suggestion of doing showers in our communities. If you're willing to put a shower in there, also take care of it. And the city manager would be very skilled at how he manages and make sure everything uh is perfect for the people coming in.
No, I don't have anything right now.
No, I, I also like a possible recommendation on the website. I think that needs to be put back into, which it should be real important. I don't know what it'll take to get that back. I know it'd be a software problem, but we lost our previous uh website person who helped helping out with the website.
I was like, we have a champion for it.
I would be more than happy to champion, I would be the champion, the, your champion for city council running meetings. Those are many, sure, yeah, okay. You're champion for everything. I'm, I would like to work on the community center and I'm spending an immense amount of time on that and, yeah. And job of your
I'm, I'm the housing guy. You're okay. The city's commission, housing committee, we've got one line. We'll try to get some taxes and, and I look for subsidies, you know, so, yeah, it's matching, matching subsidies for them.
Councilmember, go.
I'll also offer my support, if any support needed for the issues I brought up in the trees.
Oh, yeah.
The permits, the uh removal of the tar and eucalyptus trees on Highway Nine if possible. Well, things like that.
I think you've got a, a, an advocate as well at the community level with Ms. Zidler.
Yep. Isn't there orders already, lower removal of the eucalyptus tree now? With permits or without permits?
We have our, we have our city planner on. Um, Diana?
Well, let, let's try not to solve that.
Nice work.
Yeah.
Um, councilmember Lonnie had a quick question.
On, on the tree, on the eucalyptus tree removal, did we do an ordinance on that where either they can be removed or the barbecue is reduced?
I was going to include the tree ordinance as part of this packet. I don't recall off the top of my head. They are considered an invasive species. I don't believe the city requires a permit fee to remove a eucalyptus tree. Um, one thing I will say in defense of our city, I bet you we have the fastest turnaround on tree removal permits. I will get money on that than any city in this whole valley. So, and especially during this storms, we've been very conscious of the need to remove in uh trees that create hazard or have created hazards. Thank you.
Go ahead. So one of the last things I wanted to bring up, I know we've talked about it before, is our investment portfolio. And if we could try to do something better than a mattress fund, I would, that's more, more than, more than supportive of that. That's, I think, uh, was on the um city manager's report. Yeah, I, I think it is. I just wanted, yeah, just put a little emphasis behind that because we are going to, well, we are experiencing some unprecedented uh inflation going on right now and, and basically we're, we're, we're losing money with our investments, so. Uh, council member Turner, you have your hand raised. Uh, go ahead, please.
You're on you.
Thank you so much. I would like to uh work on the implementation of any annual survey. I want to make sure that our database is valid, reliable and legally defensible. So once we do, we, we conduct a survey, I would like to be part of that. The other one I would like to uh talk about is having Alert SCC as well as Fix-It and uh bring awareness to our community and get more marketing into it. And perhaps uh Gloisi uh can, can work with me on that uh so that during the Monte Sereno picnic, we can have a marketing endeavor. Thank you.
So council member Turner, what I'm hearing you say is that you will be the advocate for or the survey and what else?
Alert SCC and Fix-It to, to promote those two applications and work to uh, and, and not just a one-time promotion, to continuously promote it. Just like Cert, we ought to continuously promote Cert so that the residents are aware that, you know, it's important to the community.
Mayor, if I could make a comment?
Absolutely. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, what was brought up by the vice mayor earlier was a great idea, um, a perhaps monthly communication on an individual basis and what those are, you know, you are all passionate about. And for instance, the vice mayor mentioned meeting efficiency, how do we respond to um public comments? When they approach the dais, they're supposed to be approaching the council. It's not supposed to be a two-way communication, but nothing would preclude any council member from reaching out via a communication or post-meeting to um contact the residents or whoever the speaker is. Same thing with what council member Turner had just mentioned. Uh, and the promotion of things like Alert SCC or Fix-It Monte Sereno, that could be included in a monthly newsletter or something that one uses to communicate with residents. On the city level, we do push communications out. Uh, we usually include it on the back of our semi-annual newsletter. Um, we notify, we send out messages about our service providers. We also market it through our website. You can uh link to Alert SCC through our city website and/or Fix-It Monte Sereno and/or download the app for Fix-It Monte Sereno. But if any of you um found married in like an email drip list where you would uh you know, email constituents on a monthly basis or post comments on Nextdoor, any of those things, those would be very helpful, um, I think, to get the word out there. So.
And I think that should also include the um annual survey. We, I could, I could write something up every time we have a monthly survey and, and get it out to the residents. Thank you so much.
Would it be, sorry, would, would it be possible for uh if individual city council members want to send out newsletter or anything else, can we use the city's email address list that you have of residents?
So if you wanted to create something that you wanted to us to eat last, you could forward it to us and we can send it out in that way?
Okay.
Is that kind of?
So I was, I was um advised that you can't use city resources as an elected official unless all of the elected officials are offered the same thing. So there's, and, and I believe that town council member Moore, he, when he sends out his monthly newsletter, and I believe I just got the March edition, that it's paid for by That it's paid for by him under his uh whatever is. His number is for election uh funding. And he says in that, if you want to contact me on town business, please email me at his. His um email address for town council. Um but you you know, I think that we need to increase community involvement. And to the extent that that you want to put something out, I would fully support that. Every count, if the council members would like to do that and so.
Okay. But it would be great if we could clarify somehow, right, how we communicate those rules, so we all behave in the same way. Yeah, an evil way.
Yeah, I guess the main issue is the brown act thing, you know, to send something out that states your position. On whatever you're up showing issue, there could be some wrong act issues of the other council member reading that. From concern of the city council and Craig can explain that. You just have to, if you're reporting on what has transpired, I think that's probably easier. Because that's already happened, but if there's still a pending issue that come up again, then you have to care.
Just as a time check, it is eleven thirty on the button. I've got no problem going for another at least fifteen minutes, but I could go till noon. Yeah, if council is okay with that and stuff, I would like to hear it. Really though. Um but it doesn't, I mean, his information was was set up, maybe he'd like to describe what the neighborhood. Uh improvement uh projects would be or that whole concept. I'm not sure what the use of our time is.
I could also. I would be forward in hearing about the fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, okay, so we'll have a hard stop at eleven forty-five.
For me, we started a little bit late, so going to eleven forty-five, I think would be reasonable. I just want to give you a summary of what I've come up with so far from the discussion, um you know, regarding the first goal. Quality public services under fiscal prudence. Revising the investment policy, getting better returns on the money, essentially T-bills, certificates, deposits, whatever. Um speaks for itself, the biannual budget was another idea that I think there was consensus on to add to the goals list. Moving to category B improved governance.
If I could interrupt, there was one note that I made.
Okay.
Uh I think that we should look at a better. Information system for our city finances. And I know there are packages out there where it would be cloud-based and you'd go in and you'd be able to. Uh I I don't want to drill into that, but I I think city manager Leonardis, you and I had talked about that. But that could be a small budget item as well.
Yeah, so replace our stage, our sage system with another financing system, software system.
Yeah, that that one year from now, you know, did we get that done, yes or no? You know, it's easily measured, I think that should be an initiative.
Okay, so we have those three things under fiscal prudence, under um quality public service. Going to category B, improving governance and operations, I have shorter meetings, more efficient meetings. Um I have. That that's what I gathered from there.
Right, but the way you get there is through the facilitator that helped with the meetings. And and I can forward you what I what I saw.
Kevin Dugan?
Yeah, no, but there there's another document.
Okay.
But let's, i- if I think we should have some budget to engaging a person to help us improve our meetings.
Okay. And then going into category C, engaging community members, there is the um. You said customer service, continue to improve on that.
I think surveys in there, yes.
The survey is the one of the annual survey, that one is still on the list, so we'll keep that one on the list. There is the, you mentioned something called community involvement. And then I also brought up the council advocacy slash consultant, we'll put that in the B category above. So the community involvement um. I don't recall exactly what you s- you meant on that. Um or did we kind of cover it with customer service and?
Well, I think we can work on on wordsmithing the the list, but these are, the value was talking about the concepts, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Working on the next category, which is the community character. Cleaning the sidewalks, I call it maintenance, perhaps we can throw the storm drains in there as well. Um there is the idea of. The possible art wall or not splitting that with the neighbors fifty-fifty, um look into that perhaps deeper. Um. Moving on to mobility, better streets find a funding source for their projects, which I believe had some merit. There's also the the annual pavement improvement program and the storm drain cleaning, um I think are in that category. There is the category for the public safety, the NICPs. The tree ordinance update, I think, was, we have almost unanimous consensus on that. And I didn't have anything for sustainability, other than the cap that we were already on. Um which I think we've made such great strides in that area over the last year, it's like we really attacked that one well.
What what about councilmember Alaki's housing?
That I think would come under and and I was trying to figure out which box to put that in.
What, where would you like to see that?
Probably engaging community uh community members and or.
I I think it could be a big box, you know.
Or avoid, I can give you a character number.
I think it's a big box, providing affordable housing, I think it's your own civic topic. Because we are committing to writing and housing is with the board then. It it's something that we need to take a lot more of.
Or perhaps community safety.
Now, we want to try to, I I think it's a small box. Housing, building housing.
So put in another category.
Yeah.
We would call that affordable housing.
Yeah.
So we would have a six-goal category.
Yes.
Outside of your general plan structure.
Well, the point of the plan structure.
Or would it be part of governance and operations? I'm trying to figure out if it can fit.
Yeah, I I would prefer to use the existing framework and have it align item. And I understand it could be in a couple different areas, but but I'm not, it's. I think it would be better to have it as as a category because that.
What is the housing element category?
How the other category?
Yes, that is um, let's see. That is maintaining community character. So with the update of the general plan, housing element objective standards, we could put it in there, that's also the SB nine.
Okay.
They put it in there.
Okay, so we'll put affordable housing.
Where's the website? Which I.
I. I thought it was going to be under community.
Community, okay.
No, I think the website would be under governance and operations, maybe. Thank you for bringing that up, because I, you were on the last page, so I skipped you and I didn't want to skip you. But we'll put that under governance and operations. Okay, so we have. The list, with the exception of all the staff items that you wanted to potentially cover with city engineer.
Are you guys ready for down?
Sure, um we've got a hard stop in seven minutes. And you know, I think that he could bring or a s- a staff report to a council meeting. And the question is, do we want to include that in the budget? I think.
Many of the items that were his items were like budgetary items, that was the genesis of the conversation. I wanted to expose the council for them because there were some overlap on those items as well. But those can definitely be brought forward at budget time, along with some of these other items which were brought up today that will have a number associated with them. When I said the thing with the uh stormwater, uh there was no number attached to it, but we may have to hire. You know, it might be part of engineering, it might be some consulting work or something, there may be a number later.
So so let me hear, let me explain what I'm hearing from you. When these items appear in the budget, we will know that they're coming. We will be looking for these items in the budget that we don't, we're giving you direction as to in the study session. As to what we would expect to see in the budget and we would then talk. Debate, take public comment at that point in.
That is correct, if today you said, we don't want you to have a pickup truck and we don't want you to have a Billy Jones wall and we don't want you to do this. Tell us those things now, if those are things that you thought were um. Absolute nose, non-starters, then we won't bother with.
So. I I think a Tesla Cybertruck would be very cool, but um they're not publicly available yet. But um. Did, do we want to, what do we think about the truck? Because we've never had a city vehicle before in recent memory.
I will tell you that this winter was an eye-opener for us. It would be very nice to have that type of a vehicle. Uh case in point, you know, building inspector shows up and they're driving kind of an everyday car. People say, who are you? And it's like, oh, I have a Montesereno shirt, look, you know, it's like sometimes people think you're. You're not representative enough of our organization, but then there's also the safety aspect. There's a couch tossed out on Highway nine and you have to pull over and somehow muscle it into the back of your SUV or a television discarded or something. You pull over on the side of the road and fix a povel. On Dave's Avenue, we were out there in the rain three times, fixed a povel a couple of weeks ago. And it would be nice if we could have some flashing lights where you could just pull over and those type of things. It is a, it is a nice thing to have, I think, it's kind of an idea based on how hands are on that the city has been. That has arrived, so to speak, but somehow we've gotten away with it all this time. Previous city manager, I think, drove an electric Mini Cooper. Um the city manager drives a pickup truck, I put all the picnic stuff in my pickup truck and haul it, those kinds of things, there's differences. Um in the, you know, one's perceived need, but I think it would be, it would be very helpful to have something.
That uh. I I guess it could be brought up as an agenda item. If you're figuring that out. So you could think on the budget, I suppose. Doesn't probably do it in the data rather than trying to get it deep down right now.
I think it's an idea whose time has come. So um.
I don't have any objections to putting it in the budget.
No, I don't either.
So all the items brought forward by staff, assigned dollar amounts or whatnot to those that don't have dollar amounts, bring them forward in the budget. And then it can be finally decided at that point and we'll go from there.
Most of the preferred EV type, but we'll say it was there.
And I had one question, is there anything in our charter or in our um ordinances? That prevent the city from purchasing property?
Are you referring to acquiring land or are you referring to acquiring like a?
No, land. Land, good earth.
I don't believe there is, um at one point in time, the building we were in, the early nineteen nineties was acquired, so. Okay. I think we can, we can do whatever we want if we're.
Yeah, I, because I just think that that should also be the thing we look at in our investment portfolio, we can invest in our own community. So. I would definitely think any house in my screen is a good investment right now.
Consideration. Or anywhere else.
Yeah, really.
There's so.
Some.
Limited, if I could ask some clarification points on that.
Yes.
For instance, um as an investment strategy versus putting money in CDs and or. Is the object to get a return on a home or something that we would purchase and then perhaps. Rent out or make available as perhaps affordable housing. And then it's an asset in our portfolio versus money in the bank that is getting a minimal return. Or is the idea to try to increase facilities or city services with the property we acquire?
All of these.
All of the both, okay.
Although I wouldn't be a little area of seeing it as a speculative investment.
Yeah.
We do have that reserve policy which um requires us to have, I think it's two years of our annual budget in the bank. So we would have to look at changing that if council was interested in that idea. But I think that could come back um as a discussion, uh when we bring back the. Um idea of investing in the CDs and the um T-bills, we can include that.
But also, I think just investing in places that there could be future right-ofways, walkways, we've talked a lot about. O- over the years, making Montesereno a more walkable community, especially for folks who live over the west end of the city right now. We have the benefit of what I would call the the east side, where if I would like to walk to downtown Los Gatos. And have a nice breakfast at one of the many fine dining establishments, it's it's a twenty, thirty minute walk. But if you're living off of uh, you know, Big Mel or Becky or someplace over there. It's it's not a, it's not an easy walk, and it could be, except your only path is to go down Kido, the Highway nine. Or to walk down uh Bor and go down Wimbledon and then walk up Winchester. There's no little cut-through path that would get you from that part of the city to the, from the east side to the west side and vice versa. Okay, so forty-five seconds left, we didn't quite get as far as we wanted to, but. Uh I think that's that's success in and of itself, um going forward. How about we we work on drafts of this, putting it together? And then have it come back to council and we adopt them as our.
It will become part of an updated list, I'll take the old list, we'll modify it, we'll add the new ones and you'll get one of these, it'll be with the annual budget. So we'll get them in all the right boxes and then council will be able to comment and approve, we'll have a pre-budget. Then another pre-budget, then we'll have the budget.
I I wanted to thank you for. Presenting that to us, thank you.
And I like the thanks staff for being here on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Uh with that, I would like to adjourn the meeting at twelve forty-six PM, AM. Twelve forty-six, eleven, eleven forty-six AM. And thank you for our audience today.